Alright, thanks everybody for coming to the regular city council meeting. We're gonna call at 4:31 and we'll begin with the invitation and the flash. Evan Lee Paul, we gather here today as members of this city council seeking your guidance and wisdom. As we discuss the matters that affect our community, may our hearts be filled with compassion and our minds with clarity. Help us to make decisions that reflect the best interest of our citizens and promote unity and progress in our city. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, that brings us to item three on our agenda, public comments. Do we have any comments today?
Susan Lord. Hello everyone, I wanted to bring up something that has been bothering me a little bit for quite some time. When I come to these meetings, I notice that cell phones are used a lot and I find it to be very disrespectful to the city, to the constituents, and to every other council member. So, I would like to see a no-cellphone policy behind that wall. Just a personal opinion, so I think it's disrespectful to everyone here. So, that's all, thank you.
Cheryl Duhon.
Good evening, Cheryl Duhon, on the Ford's Cafe Drive. I'm just here because Barbara Mitten gave me a call and she had noticed that there's a speed sensor in front of the road. And so she remembers that several of our constituents in Valley Lodge had a problem with some speeding cars on those long roads. So she was just asking if it's possible for the city to get a sensor. And of course, then Eric admitted, well, there's no shoulders to put it on, did it end up in a ditch when you put it out here? So, I was just bringing that forward.
Thank you. I'll just share that it's in front of rovers, it's one like the cops, they say, "Come on, line four, take five miles, you're out."
So, just to offer a piece of information, it can be done in Valley Lodge. You cut that to the pass and you put it on somewhere that has the driveway, a culvert, to keep it off of the road itself. Appreciate the support. Any other public comments, Cheryl?
Yes, Kristy Smith. Yay! Kristy Smith, 36630 Canyon. I will add to Cheryl that if you speed on wagon, you're gonna be in a ditch because the one thing about the rolling waves and wagon, they keep the speed down, and so do all the bunks, anyway. So I have a few things here, I'm gonna try to do this in three minutes. Thanks to all the residents in Simonton that delivered a successful Halloween. If it wasn't for the homes, the hay haulers, and the planters that make the success, we couldn't do it. It wouldn't be as successful every year. It was definitely a huge success and I know that Miss Peggy and Jerry handed out over 200 popcorn balls. So, the next thing I want to mention is, we will be doing a bench dedication, they know about it. I sat down with them for an hour yesterday. This has been on my heart, these are two people that have served this community. She served on the city council for more than about 25 years. He was the founding father on our deed restrictions. And he basically, if you live in section two and three, you should be ultra grateful for Jerry Wright because I found out today that you almost could even get through section two and three because of all the debris and all the shrubs. So he broke a truck, went through many chainsaws, cleared out debris, basically, when they started building their house. So, we're gonna do a bench dedication honorary with the help of CA Services and my friend here Susan on December 23rd at 10:00 a.m. in the park. So, that's on our friend's Simonton page, but if anybody else wants to share it. I didn't invite her to the event page I made, but I did invite you and all the council members. And the reason why I didn't invite her yet is because we're sneaking some questions in and I want to invite her after the event so she can see what everybody said. So, the more the merrier, if anybody has any great comments about them, any memories, that would be great. Another thing I was passionate about and that I've been working on is the wraps around electrical boxes. The minute I went through Fulcher and I saw the wrap around the electrical box, I'm like, "Oh my gosh, we need this in Simonton." That big one that that lady ran over, if we could get something cute on there. So my thought was the Cotton Gin because it used to live there. The Cotton Gin actually injured many people because they ran straight through it and went into the tin building. So I thought a good way to honor that would be doing that. So I have contacted the guy that actually did the wraps in Fulcher and we've been having conversation. I just have to get measurements and then I text Lori to see, there's one in front of Valley Lodge, but it's an electrical box. I don't know if we can do that one, but we should be able to do the AT&amp;T one with the city's help. And maybe that would be a fund, I don't know the price, I'll be getting Lori the quote, but maybe something that keeps Simonton beautiful can fund. And then, I'm gonna go into the open records request. It's honestly like pouncing on a dead mouse. Working people like me, I do not care about emails, conversations, I go to work every day. I don't have time to sit behind a computer and stop people. The past is the past, Andy has said it repeatedly. Like, it's out of control and it's the same accusations that go on and on and on and it doesn't stop. Meanwhile, while all this crazy stuff is going on, you have culverts being laid on the concrete plant acreage and then 10 people in this community dwelling on the pass and no zoning's in place. We have to move forward on zoning and I'm pretty certain that's a neighborhood that's trying to build. So I emailed the county, y'all know, and Lori, I'm sure she's taken action because we let her know, so hopefully.
I have a question, Chris, that comes up. I have a question, the wrap you're talking about, I don't think I've seen them before, I don't know what they look like. Are you talking about like somebody wraps a car with, like plaster wrap?
It's like Jatton.
Yes, like they do cars with, so, yeah. They have the big longhorn in downtown Fulcher right now, it's so pretty. And that's the meter that operates their lights, so it's pretty. So I'll just, I'll send you a text.
The dedication, I know you said it's for Jerry Wright, but it's for Peggy.
Jerry and Peggy, the Wrights, so both of them, yep. December 23rd at 10:00.
Thank you for sharing your concern about that.
Yes.
And everyone's wrong.
Yes, but be surprised, that's why I kept it kind of quiet.
Alright, thank you, sir, that makes me so happy. Alright, without any objections, we're gonna move item nine, reports, to go next. We'll come back to item four, consent agenda items. Item nine, reports, I'll take that off. I've been giving it the last couple of meetings, a little tidbit, it's about the broadband expansion project that Portland County has coordinated. There's been some grant funding that's been allocated to the county for that and it's getting through Simonton's turn. So we have some experts here today, gonna give us an update on what the project is, how big it is, and give us some details so that everybody in Simonton will know more about it. So with that, can I turn it over to you to tell us, introduce everybody?
Yeah, sure. I'm Kenneth Loveley with Portland County IT. I have the privilege of project managing the piece for the broadband expansion. Something really, really near and dear to my heart because I recognize the broadband just to all communities. And so we had the privilege, through the support of the Commissioner's office, to submit an RFP. We got a partnership with Comcast. Generally, when you do RFPs or when you try to do some business like that, we have to fund some of it. And we did that, but they came along and said, "Hey, we can invest that with six times what we put in." So, the residents are really going to benefit from the great, great partnership. And obviously Justin's thunder, but Justin with Comcast.
Yeah, I'll stand up here and present to you guys just a little bit about the expansion and timeline. So, Justin Conyers, External Affairs with Comcast. Just wanted to give you all a quick update, similar to what Kent was talking about, we go to the broadband expansion. So, I'm excited to share an update on our planned build in Simonton. This project is part of a broader effort to bring fiber connectivity to Kendallton, Needville, Thompsons, and Simonton. And it's only possible because of the strong public-private partnership of Portland County. We especially want to thank the Portland Commissioners Court for dedicating a portion of the ARPA funds to make broadband expansion a reality. We're on track to start Simonton construction in the second quarter of 2026. Our commitment is to finish by the end of the year or sooner. Don't hold us to that, sometimes construction gets a little messy and things happen where it can push the date back or even push it up. So, second quarter of 2026, and then we hope to finish by the end of the year. When we're done, every home and business along our planned route will have access to Comcast's full suite of services. So that's internet, we have home, which is security, cable, just, we really have a suite of products outside of just internet. So it's really an exciting suite that Simonton really may not have right now. And so, we're really excited for that and the opportunity to offer it to you all. We're making sure high-speed internet is accessible to everyone, so we have another option that's Internet Essentials. So that's essentially for families who can come and if they necessarily can't afford, let's say, the $7 or $80 internet, this is an affordable option for them, it's called Internet Essentials. It's essentially just a lower plan of internet. So, it's $14.99 a month, families do have to qualify. So again, once construction is done and those families do qualify, they can sign up for the essentials and they're paying $14.99 a month. So, that's an exciting option too, it's also, it's part of our full suite of options. And then if people want the higher gigabyte internet, they can sign up for that as well. So, so what's next? Over the next, over the coming months, we'll continue preparing construction in Simonton. Permits will be submitted, our teams will meet with Public Works and we'll share updates to the communities as we get closer to breaking ground. We look forward to working with the city every step of the way. And if you want to learn more, stay updated, you can visit ComcastTexas.com/extension.
Can we have a map?
I'm sorry.
Could you have a map?
One of the things that we're preparing in conjunction with Kiana and the rest of the team, we'll have a dashboard, so you'll be able to see addresses that are being serviced, they're com- available, and the full locations of where Comcast will offer service. So that will be available to you.
Yes, sir.
We need a gig and obviously, where we already have the whole lights, everything will be underground.
Everything will be underground?
For Simonton, no, everything will not be underground. It was a more affordable option for us to go aerial and serve in a lot of places. One of the other concerns that we had with going underground was just the rocks and river and potential flooding. So, just to be able to restore and get customers back online at the time of the matter, we did choose to go aerial in some sections of Simonton, we'd need some underground as well.
So, only comment on that comment is that, yes, we plug whole subdivision, right? Now I would have thought fiber's a lot more waterproof than having it in the air where you guys, everything falls away down. Our post without the, you know, walk-in access, so I don't know, just, y'all are professionals, you're the best. The other question is, you're gonna have to go from wherever you go underground to my house, correct?
So, that's very dependent on the tap location. So if there is something that would be difficult underground to connect specific customers, that will be identified during the time of construction, we'll be making contact with them just to make sure that when we release these homes that is like serviceable, meaning they can call and see the services, there's no issue or additional construction needed. So as we navigate through the communities, if there's anything that we need to modify with our existing plans, we're willing to do so.
Do you have, is there a plan that could be shared?
We can share houses, we cannot leave houses. So some of the places you can identify, just what we plan on doing, given that Simonton is appropriate as in Portland County, we do currently have approved work and county permits. But then the next few weeks, we will be submitting the city's promised permits. We'll show the infrastructure of exactly what we're doing, the concealment and the hot compliance. I think we have Ken to kind of stand over, we already have approved for Simonton build out, but you should be seeing, receiving more documents for those, uh, contracts as well.
Would that tell us if, wait, there's one subdivision right now, so one neighborhood, but would that, if you make sure to be aware, we would find out if current properties are part of the goal to be served or for reconstruction only or a hybrid?
Essentially, yes, essentially, yes. It's alright, I'm not trying to be vague with this question, she's our, this is Kiana, she's our construction manager, so this is her wheelhouse.
Team members, find it out.
Yeah, so, yes, essentially a tantric question, yes. That will, you'll be able to see them out and you can see kind of, they're in this, in the circle we're in, so.
I think Ken has shared with us that there's 500-ish, 600 addresses that are in the project right now.
Yes.
Does that sound right?
594, yes.
I knew I was somewhere.
What's the 600?
So what assurance can you for Comcast, give the city, and as far as leaving the conditions as you found them? Because there have been other cities that have now been getting, you know, you're coming on to everybody's easement and that's always a touchy issue, but a lot of things that I've seen recently have been leaving holes in the property, broken property, and things of that nature, so what assurance?
So that's something I can't speak to.
Ken?
I can, sorry. So, we want to leave it the way we found it, that's, that's the goal always. And like I said, sometimes construction can get messy. So, we can make a promise in the front to say, "We're gonna put it back the way we found it." And, you know, if we have to, you know, sometimes water lines are hit or sometimes things are just messed up, we're gonna try not to do that, that's not our goal to come in and do that. But, you can trust that we're gonna put things back the way we found them. And, you know, if we messed up someone's tree and accidentally chopped it down, or, I think we've had that happen in the past where...
So our goal is actually to restore the way we found or better. So we may leave the land better than found when we go into construction. We do also have a system where if there are any concerns as far as damage or anything going on with your lawn, garden, whatever the case may be, driveway, there are moving ways for you guys to contact us. We can go out and, you know, prepare at, you know, our cost, essentially. Also, we do a lot of door tagging, so we'll be able to identify that we will be in an area as we get closer. And as you mentioned, we do have a website, which we have signs that will have a QR code that residents will be able to scan and be able to kind of get more information as it comes along.
But the authority is going to be Eric, right?
Yes.
So you can send the message, that is.
So I would just, sorry, just one second, before our prepared. So I would just offer that Simonton has a notification system, that we can create social media, but we have a notification system too. So waiting for tagging or, can be helpful, we're happy to improve that as part of messaging that we can send out.
Okay. Good to know.
Did you have a question?
This man, hopefully isn't my last, because please talk about, just bring it out. Well, you have explicitly, right? Only Comcast can come through here and play a part in that, from either the Commissioner's, Art House, whoever. It's only Comcast.
Maybe as of now, but doesn't mean it's forever.
Yeah, and I would say the broadband expansion of the Brooklyn Commissioner's Board is only the Comcast's. Because of the cause they were using and the way that the party was built and the partnership that they've shown thus far, it's only the Comcast's.
Okay, so Comcast obviously has done the analysis on the competition and make it succeed or not succeed?
Yes.
Well, good luck, because honestly, the bandwidth that most people need, there are other options and doesn't require cables in the house, doesn't require a lot of things. I'm just saying, while we are very underserved and we want as fast fiber setup we can get, we're the only, we're the only one coming in, appreciate that. We're not the only one there.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Please take a game. Alright, I just want to say one thing, I'm here from the Commissioner's office as a representative, he cannot be here this evening. But I just want to say, if we could ever be, if any support to the council, the city, or the residents, please let us know. We are here to help and I can leave some cards here as well, I have a four-month-old baby at home, so I have to get back to her. But also, I don't know if I can get off topic, we have a seating. The constable's office has two radar trailers that were paid for by the county assistance districts. So you can make a request to the constable's office and they can put them there. I'm not sure on the scheduling, but you can always email him and let him know. So, and they're the really cool ones that you can actually like have a message on there or what have you, but it won't all, just tell you the speed, it'll, you can do a message as well, so, just letting you know.
Fantastic, thank you so much and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Take the Commissioner's.
Absolutely.
And I'll take a card.
That's no worries.
Alright, thank you all for coming, you are welcome to stay and enjoy small town. Thank you for having me, ladies, if you want, also go home to your family.
Maybe that's one of those good excuses.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. I would all grow up.
Yeah, thank you for helping me get a report on that.
I'm going to set up your thing, but I think he's gonna ask you a question.
Oh, that's hilarious.
That is a laugh. I appreciate it very much.
Alright, Ms. Drow has my, my information. I love to talk broadband all day, so I would have to talk about it too, maybe. Let's call the partners, y'all, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening, thank y'all.
Alright, our next report, just to lay out, since it's applicable to this topic, easements. Easements are gonna come up over the next year while this project is being worked on. Just a reminder to everyone, most every property in Valley Lodge, lots and lots of the properties that are in the rest of the city, have easements that are adjoining, adjacent, you'll have power lines. If you're going aerial, it won't be such a issue hopefully, but if you have built on an easement, if you have a fence across an easement, when they're tagging and we're sending out notices to let them know they're coming, they will need to get into the property, just like when you guys from Center Point, contractors are out doing tree trimming. So, we'll keep everybody apprised as much as we can when that's coming. But, if you're thinking about that, if you need to make accommodations for your dog or your gate unlock, those sorts of things, we can to make sure we get advance notice out first available.
Wouldn't that only be if I subscribe?
I mean, if I have to go through the easements and put the lines for someone else, or some other partner here. That's it for me for reports, Ms. Angela, if you have some, for my recent event?
Yeah, I just wanted, I wasn't here last week, so I apologize. I just wanted to say a huge, huge thank you to everybody on council, like every single person on council showed up to our safety fest and it was such a blast. Thank you Susan for helping out with the POA, helping with the food. You know, when she wrote her asking, "So how many people do you think are gonna come?" I said, "I would be so happy, 50 people came," and I think we had over 150 people that came. And we ran out of food, which is a good thing, so Andy, Justin, Eric, and of course my husband all came and hooked up the grill, and we had a girl scout come out and help with food and clean up. So, overall, it was just a great night, so I just wanted to thank everybody on council for coming out and supporting.
Thank you for taking that together.
Great.
That amazing job. Do you want to continue with Keep Simonton Beautiful?
Sure, so with Keep Simonton Beautiful, I just wanted to let everybody know that on November 23rd, on Sunday, we are going to meet here at City Hall and gather up all of our beautiful decorations and decorate the city. And we welcome any volunteer helpers to come, you can bring your kids, we have dogs, and then we'll do the inside and the outside of City Hall. And then we do the library and we're gonna welcome the same things everywhere. So, the more the merrier, it makes it go a lot faster with more hands. And so we're gonna meet here at 9:00 a.m. on Sunday morning.
That is awesome. Thank you so much, Angela. Just can you have the EDC?
Yeah, so where are we, where are we retiring?
So we have one company that is already, it's already, it's a pre-terrible process, it has provided us a bid. Their bid is higher than our total budget. So we're keen with them to understand where we might scale that back. We need LGA to come back as tall as what their portion typically would be, so we can, we need to amend that budget for each council. Angela has helped quite a bit with that, we've contacted several other companies, we've had no bids so far or no callback. So we may not have to go with it since things are even in the process. But the goal, in my mind, would be by end of December, have gathered, we want that answer so that we can reach that company or companies the council will consider.
What's LGA's, what's your action plan to meet the project?
The first, December. And you get three things still in the process.
Okay, we get, I'd be happy, we get a hundred. I think I did this, did this one out? You have a question on that?
Sure.
Budget for some, one of the projects, is it, who's got the city, is anyone's getting?
Say it again, sorry, I'm sorry, I must have missed something.
I'll talk.
It's the fan.
The EDC, EDC, they want to go, or actually, do this only, okay, do this only?
From the council, the general budget, not EDC, there's a budget in that, those parts. So they're, they covered, and last, up last year, did this back, so they're in the budget same this year. I think it is under consulting, although not within the budget.
Alright, so.
So, if we need to amend the budget, then we may be asking our partners, the EDCs, if they contribute or council, I can decide how we do it.
I'm sorry, I mentioned to Justin that the possibility of operators trying to speed up the zoning process and I think it's important. And Justin, hey, he told 316, he said, "You told me the time is gonna be on the EDCs and now that place is gonna be..." What I said was, the city is voting for, but depending on where it needs, it's like often, if something goes open, we can, that, that's good. Thanks for helping, still standing to do that, I know, discussing the answers, just for your interest.
Any other reports? Eric has a couple of reports, but anybody else have some? Alright, sir, the floor is yours, we're gonna talk about, what you learned at TML.
I couldn't understand that, that's okay. Thank, I want to start out saying this is probably too long for most of you to get that, that's okay. On our body, 28 is, I was with the mayor and said, "I'm gonna be going to the TML conference before I leave." I believe that training and understanding what's available is very, very important. At the time, I think seeing the audit at 28 is how I asked for it, I wanted to. At the same time, I asked for $2,500 in budget per council member to be added to the budget. We can't validate that yet, but it's not finished, that's okay. And then I asked for the promise for all employees and council members, just state law or our training requirements. So we continued and that was on 8/20. It ended up happening all the way from 8/22, right before I named the developer, 8/24, there was conversations and communication. And I think there was a misunderstanding because the TML, there's a annual comprehensive, there is a collection for people to be on, like the school district that passed it, they have another group. And I said, "Well, maybe I could join that and represent the city." Then I asked about the resolution, the most important thing was city banks and resolutions that we put forth. It ended up on 10/24, when we were leaving, the conversations were there. That stated that the council members' consensus was not that they select anyone to represent the Simonton community. That upset me, I can't believe this council agreed before we were there to say, "We don't want anyone to represent us on TML." So I proceeded to go anywhere. It was all the way, I gave out a, had a council report, which is on resolutions. Because while I was over there, people at TML, the people who run TML, they're very aggressive in terms of being sure about this space. They saw City of Simonton, or asked me if I was representing the City of Simonton, said, "Not really, I'm the only one here." Then you're representing City of Simonton, and I gave them, I already quote. So I'm gonna tell you what happened because you should have gotten the proposed legislation that... So I'm going to tell you what happened, because you should have gotten the proposed legislation that affects all of us. And I'll tell you which resolutions passed and didn't pass, and then we go back to the T M L, they'd like to download and see what happened. But some of them, very interesting, I think is kind of what learning exercise could have been. Then resolution indicating to maintain order and decor during citizen comment hearings. I don't know if y'all think that would pass or fail. Failed. The reason it failed is they thought there'd be contention about freedom of intervention and being able to have, uh, your rights back. That's what they said. So City of, uh, compelled that offered that one. Then there was one that, uh, City compelled also offered, and related to required posting period for proposed municipal budget from thirty days down to twenty-one. We all looked at that because of the problems we have today, where they didn't give us the information that we have proposed, et cetera. So that proposal to go from thirty days down to twenty-one passed. City of La Porte put one in that said, we want voter choice of polling locations on election day, other than through the county-wide polling place program. Well, honestly, we don't have that problem. We don't have that problem. Port Doug and other people around Houston, et cetera, has the problem. It passed. Another one was resolution of built it type A general law city to be able to accept donations of money for other property on behalf of the city for the purpose of performing a post, and conferred by law on the city or a city officer. Wouldn't that be nice, if somebody could give us, give right now? So.
So Eric, please, all of you, be able to continue, but you're saying that these items passed. I want to clarify through the council and the public that that means.
What happened?
That the T M L will seek legislation on those items.
Thank you, got it. So here's what happens. The T M L has this conference, and they're going to have another conference. And everybody knows that our representatives only meet once every two years. So what happens in between is people try to push resolutions, get laws changed, help their representatives, senators, everybody, push what they want. T M L represents a ton of people, a ton of cities, all of us. For instance, just to know, I didn't want to quote that, but if you want to know what happened, they have this paper that I got a scan. Toll bills were introduced in nine thousand thirteen. Toll bills that passed, one thousand two thirty-one. City bills that would affect us, introduced, two thousand plus. How many passed? Two hundred and sixty-two last year. So you see, there's so much work and confusion, but then finally they do get to work and they pass because they think you do. So this is step one. There'll be a step two. Maybe you could step three. What happens is these ones that pass now, it's brought far, say, if y'all still want to do this, and if you want to strengthen it, how much money do we want to devote to, uh, the campaign, and that's up to you. Thank you. All right. That's the left off, the donation of money. It would be nice. I think that, uh, I, I heard Benson is someone wanting to contribute to us. The science, right? And they can't, because it's against the law. Benson passes good legislation. You can get land, you can get anything from anyone. All right, so the next one. In this vote, uh, this one is public works professionals to be, uh, regarded as first responders in the state of Texas. So we don't have public works. A lot of large cities have public works, and we ask for some, you know, private works that have public works. And those professionals, uh, stood up to talk to this and say, hey, you know who's critical to us if we have a public, and we have to get people to public, we promise. It's public workers, right? So we bring in these public workers, PM whatever, it failed. And I think the main reason the opposition to it was that, uh, firefighters, police, or the other people who recognize are much more at risk than a public. Uh, the next one, resolution related to preempting of food regulation. So that was put in by, um, who was? Sorry. I think this is just T M L itself, and that's to do with preempting food regulation where, uh, preempt otherwise limited authority of cities to regulate food establishment. So you come in, you want to regulate a restaurant, you strict, strict ordinance, you can expand around this unregulated, high-risk food production, food trucks. This is primarily what this came out. It passed. Resolution appreciating people who presented for the council, but they had that passed. Of course, that just happened in passing. And change references to associate members to business members. So it passed, and so we're a social member, I think, if we follow the call business. And.
We pass the next round, like how we pass.
Yes, most, most of these have passed, and you're there, and in the room, you see how many people were there? I mean, that's like four, I think. It passed, but like, sorry, I expect the same percentage of characters, especially. The, uh, they want constitutionally changed, authorized, actually be taken by standing committee outside of the meeting. It doesn't make sense that, you have a standing committee, you can make a decision, so it passes. Now, the one that's going to affect us is, uh, to remove the, there was a mayor, there was association of mayors, council members, and commissioners. They got removed as a guilt by pass to do it. They think they had too many associations and other small entities within T M L. And the last thing that passed that does affect us is a resolution increasing T M L member city services, five percent increase. So I don't know many of them affected here, but, uh, they might be that would affect the four commissioners of the province, of the T M L. So it will probably be the last one to increase in T M L. All right, so the next thing is unanswered bootcamp. I attended several sections. Uh, you have this document, it's called unanswered bootcamp. The package is colored nicely, colored. So what have you learned? I don't know if anybody read it, ready? Want to make comments first? Anybody want to make comments?
Everybody's had it for a couple of weeks now, so if you just want to get the high points, that'll do you good.
We'll go faster. So if you want to hit high points, we'll go straight to fun types. And it's something that maybe we could pass on to, uh, Stacy and look at, I'm a lucky very soon point. I think when you look at whether it's a government fund, proprietary fund, beneficiary funds, you have, I think, fairly good separation of parties in our current fund view picture. It's missing one, pardon me, but I'll get to that in a minute. Uh, it explains the fund act of how they're used, the general fund, and then there's one that's called special revenue funds, where I think it's a four percent real tax that would be put there, and that's one hundred, six hundred would probably be numbered, but it's not, you're not looking at all. Maybe we'll consider separating, uh, as a fund. It is going to separate, you can't. The council resources that are restricted or committed for specific purposes, which is why the real tax is. All right, so that can be read. People can read this, or shout, and see if you want to take action with the committee or. Debt service, uh, we don't have these, so that doesn't matter, honestly, at home. Internal service fund, which the E D C A, they've reacted as well already, it's pretty much all done. Management focus of government funds says actually possibly speaks to how this vote should be, and just a little learning to get from that. And modify approval of government funds. Uh, and that's where investments of our funds come in, and how we manage our funds, and we'll talk a bit more, uh, Mayor and I talked earlier. And we'll talk a little bit more about some things there. So I'll skip through that. And category fund balance, committed versus restricted versus non-spendable. We use these terms a lot, talking all the time, committed and covered, et cetera. What we could do with this, with this proposal, with this explanation from that, was agree to understand, are we using the terms correctly? Because I think, and I'm guilty, we all think we're using it correctly. The, uh, banking collateral, so what's really important there is I looked at it, and they said that the council has set out the good policy for banks, outside the community, to compete for your business. That's a lot, local government to a one or five, so. Public positive contract cannot exceed five years. I don't know how long it would take first, but it said, be with them within five years. I, I would find the only reason for that is to prevent too much conflict between, I don't know, conflict, who has, this, this. Uh, we need at least three million in collateral from the first bank, because we only guarantee two fifty, uh, individual and collateral.
That's not right.
That is right.
No, we have I C S accounts, Mr. Monk. I C S accounts, our money is spread out.
Okay, so let me try.
Several banks.
I hear what you're saying.
And the limit is two fifty on all those accounts, so they're spread out across several banks.
I don't want to, I don't want to discuss this in debate, but I'm going to tell you about idea by asking the specific questions, I'd be able to bring it up.
I've taken this training and been certified.
That's all I'm going to say to you, because the T M L very much trains also. And I'm not arguing with you. I don't want to argue, I'm just going to say, if I can, we're here, the research is done, Phil, we look at the, uh, municipal product, nice to, and we'll be discussing that. So what it means, all it means, and I think you first said it, when everybody came here, they said that we have a collateral fund that covers you up to some millions of dollars, and that's all it requires. Not worried about the two fifties, fifty, the best, whatever. You have to pull out of the firm you first came, and you're covered, and that's all the point, the only point. I do believe at this point, and I'm missing the dollar, but we should have a finance committee. I think you've had one before.
I think I, you and I talked this afternoon, and I told you that we have a board, and did not recall that we did that until I was reading through files. And it's time to rejuvenate that.
Okay. I'll leave that with you. Thank you. And, uh, the next thing was, uh, the investing funds, so five of ten, which we create the six, talks about the investment of funds and how it works. But if you do create a reserve, if you create a finance committee, all of this, the rest of this stuff, it's pretty much, you can't do that. And it requires training that you have to do. So that's it on that. And we have one possible violation that came up, and that is, uh, for purchase, purchases. This has to do with hiring out, for purchases between three thousand and a hundred thousand, you have to, by law, according to them, uh, get this from historically underused businesses. And so I said, what the heck is that? I'm sorry, I didn't fully get this back. Which, what they say is that you're historic, underused businesses, and they give you H D P S to go there. If there are more than two vendors in county or city, can both take opportunities. But while you still have the choice of who to choose, you have to at least give these people chase, yeah. We didn't, we didn't do that. So it's a possible violation, but I'm, I'm just going to hear this, it's too late. It's too late.
Well, you recall that I discussed that with Phil, and he made sure we were within the requirements for four weeks, presented it the past time. But I'll be happy to take that, you're here.
Yeah, we give Phil to you. So these are just the help vendors in our county now. What it is, if you can't do it in your city, then you have to look, at least look at the county, the countywide businesses. All right, so that all, that's what came out of my business at T M L. There are other meetings and other people that I visited, but I'm going to hold it off for maybe ending up the conversation later, taking up a lot of time. But the net, net is, I firmly believe people on this council, we can stay constant for seven years, at least, if they want to, to these conferences, get some training. And the budget I asked for will cover, because my money that I spend, I turn into a little under the twenty-five hundred, or actually just twenty-two. And that's what it's going to take. That's what it's going to take. And then training is not just for us in the budget, it's also for secretary, or new straight, or our other partners, and maybe for deer. You, you trade it. All right, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for letting us have a look. Fun. All right, so thank you, everybody, for working with me on moving reports up. We'll go back to item four on our agenda. Few days on the consent agenda. First of all, I'm going to review the finance items, A, B, C, and D. Who wants to look them up? We'll just take all the finance items from A through E. We'll go through those one by one, comment. That leaves items F, G, H, I, J. Reconsider minutes from August nineteenth, or a correction, that was amendment that was made. Minutes from September sixth, minutes from September ninth. Minutes from September ninth, special meeting, there was a budget workshop and a special meeting on the same day, it's not the same date. And minutes from November fifth, special meeting, which was our last meeting. Uh, will remain in consent agenda. Does anyone have, well, any remaining items that you want to discuss and review from consent? All right, so we have a motion on the consent agenda.
Now, Mayor, I'm going to read approved items, all items that remain in consent. That's after J, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, also.
F. Yeah, F. Second, Andy, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, back to the finance items. Item A, monthly income report. The reason you can't find it in your packet is we reached at the last meeting where we had finance to retire that account, because it's the one that's about income, but it's for cash over the current. It's not true representation, it just caused confusion. The information from that report isn't some of the other reports that we have reviewed. So if you strike A, we'd already posted the agenda about time we draw, so that would need to come up. Item B, so first, I would like to practice the rest of the reports by saying to the monthly payment listing report and the monthly financial report, which we get every single month. They are a snapshot of what the finances look like right now for that month. There may be things that come in later, there may be things that aren't posted yet. It's not an incomplete report, but it's not closed, and those type of reports don't get closed until we close our fiscal year. Stacy, if I give you any press, prescription, feel free to jump in.
When you ask me to print the reports, I prepare and look out, I print them on a specific day, and I do them on nine one to nine thirty.
Right.
Right? And if I do that on the fifteenth, but then I go over the process of more payments, and the report's already printed and not forgiven you, well, those payments are going to post under that report, but you're not going to see them because you already have the report. So while it's, you have to take into account that everything with government finances, fluid, and it's constantly moving, and it's changing. And like Lori said, until everything is closed and, uh, finalized with the specific, you know, fiscal year. And reconciliation, fiscal year, and everything's done, um, it's, it's moving hard, so.
So I say that, so everybody knows, because September is the end of the fiscal year.
Yes.
And as we go through this, we're going to point out a few things. Eric put in a couple, I've got a couple for you that aren't finished yet, but that doesn't make this, these reports invalid or unusable. You could certainly decide whether you want to accept them or not, but explaining, well, it's not going to change, but just maybe re-explaining the why. All right, on the payment listing report. Eric asked a question about the T M R S employee payments. On the first page, sorry, on the second page. And yes, we printed two sides, so to save paper. It could be on the back of your agenda, page one. But page two, where you see the T M R S payments on nine nineteen and nine five. Those are comparable, they're all needed. I gave each of you, do I do these three marks? Yeah, we do a separate page, so not on the line of who you got here today. Or, oh, it's not T M R S, sorry, uh, we're going to get to that in a second, you may tune in to the peek up. Stacy?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't block T M R S.
Yeah, the payments that you see on the payment report are populated by the process table. Payroll's processed in the payroll module, things that the city needs to pay out automatically go over to the house payment sign, and that's where they come in. So it's not that.
So.
And I will do some further looking into the dollar amounts, because Shane's been wrong enough now, in per payroll process, it should be very close to the same amount. There were some corrections, so just some further digging into the T M R S.
Yes, thank you.
Did you have a question here?
Well, that was it. We had that one before you and I, just for just the same reason, I'll look at it, this type of fear, right? Because, I mean, you're being a classic, there is. Wondering why you're being the same, they're just staying about the same. Just a question, why it might not be correct. We can handle this.
Yeah.
So the payment listing report is probably two pages. This is person four B, page one or two. Do we have any other questions about this particular report? Oh, the payments belong to your buddy.
Right.
So the separate page you have that shows your ATNT payments. You're in vendor report, and you can see first net and cell phones. There's a separate bill, it always there's internet here at City Hall. This one. And the final one is for fifteen fifty-two. That was a regular monthly bill plus some amount that we've been negotiating with them to get corrected from when they had our account wrong some months ago. We finally paid the final amount of that. But to Eric's point, we need to do some further work to determine if that belonged in August or if it belongs in September. Because we couldn't have two. It should be that eight hundred and three dollar amount for the regular monthly part. So we won't get that in the practice.
Supposed to be in September, it was made on the credit card. Credit card payment was made. So it's, and then if I had to do some labeling of the item. So that can't go in the school. Cheyenne is going to get on the AT&T side and pull up the history of store payments.
So questions on that? You said it's paid by credit card?
It was, not me. We're not paying, the regular AT&T is not coming out of the credit card. First net is on the credit cards, auto pay. We're just going to leave it there. Our regular AT&T is a ACH.
You're saying auto pay? Auto new credit?
The first, yeah, the first net is auto pay on the credit.
Okay. So the question on the credit card payments is still money that comes out of the.
Right.
Operating fund. And then, uh, then you have to make entry to take that money from the refund here.
Correct.
To account for, to receive. All right. So for every credit card payment, that's exactly the same process. Okay. For every automatic payment, how does that work? I didn't know we did auto payments out of, out of.
On the credit card?
No, auto payments are out of.
Out of the bank? Yes, the Mars number is set up for auto payment.
Out of new credit?
AT&T will not be one of them because it's not a consistent amount. It changes. So we need to review the bills. So that's not one that will happen.
Okay. On that. Thank you.
Was that the last one on the payment listing, I mean, on the financial statement?
I, uh.
I don't like this, but I've been going back. The payment listing report, was the, Eddie Peacock question on this one?
Yes, uh, yes, it was.
So that's the other page that you received. That's yellow highlight on it. There were three payments in September to Peacock. And that, I don't remember if I sent it to you or not, but they bill each one. So you're going to be perfectly, no a hole, but you have three or even four payments in a month if they're working on her. And you can, the reason I named it sheet, you can see each one has a separate invoice number. And payment date. And we'll state that.
Thanks for the detail.
That. Are there any other questions on the payment listing report?
Just, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have a building, uh, or a B C biz life, building ninety-nine. If that's cameras? Cameras, right? All of them are coming to the L R.
Get connected. So if you do it monthly or however long.
That's on price.
If you want to subscribe, you can.
So they're active?
We're back to set.
Hey. All right. Who had access?
Cheyenne.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on the payment listing report? All right, do you have a motion on I V, the payment listing report? For September twenty twenty-five?
I move that we accept the payment listing report.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll do that soon next. Item C is the monthly financial report. So I can take as many notes on that section, Eric, when you and I spoke about it. But addressing your questions about some categories, you can tell we should, we would assume have deposits or activity in the current month actual, which is the first column on the left that has the numbers after the description. And the example that Eric and I talked about was interest on Cedars. There's a zero balance on that, a zero activity. Uh, but you could see sales tax. Other E D Cs, it wasn't a lot, but stay with that one as a big example. Because we have a process that no one in the office puts that, those numbers in for that particular category. So we want it to be right, we want to see the A and handle that. So for the month of September. The Cedars. I see that one on that same page here.
Oh, okay, yes.
The interest and.
Seven franchise payments.
Yeah, franchise, they're not entered yet.
And, uh.
Peacock is a little bit behind on that, and we will be the ones to make those entries. By the time we close the fiscal year, we'll be able to see that for every month.
So.
Apologies that they are a little behind, but.
Well, can I state, Paul, on your, uh, rest of the council?
Sure.
All right. City's checking, uh, working something, has done up in October, May thirty first. E D C A, June thirty.
So you would just be sure, particularly include or define that they go back in and out. They work in those accounts all, all the time? And then they go in and reconcile to an official, call the reconciliation checkbox and close it.
Correct.
So it doesn't mean they want to touch this instead? But they have to do the reconciliation.
That's, okay. Say it right, where it is reconciled. It's not been reconciled. It's fine with this. A C A six thirty twenty-five, E C D six thirty twenty-five. Brands are in pretty good shape, eighty thirty months twenty-five. K S B is actually current. Uh, money market is eight thirty one twenty-five, and tax pool is eight thirty one twenty-five. What's the consequence? As you said, the consequence is we cannot, we cannot close books until December. When you give them enough time to reconcile all the way to September thirty.
Well, they're not, they're not all current. You're not wrong about that. But I would say that eight thirty-one, August thirty-first, that's forty days compared with the month of eighteen.
Right.
So it's not, they're not all six or eight months behind or something, they're just not complete. All of them, the important ones are not complete to September yet.
Okay, and then one other comment on the financial report, uh, is that there are no Cedars in Hungary. No interest in Hungary, which doesn't exist, correct?
Correct, that's what we were just talking about, a little bit of century.
Correct.
That is, there is some, because you know, looking at it today.
Cedars, Cedars interest in Hungary?
Yeah, because you can see here to date, but it did not have any last month.
Well, I guess the point is that makes it difficult, right? We talked about how difficult it is to take our reports and you have to manage them through all kinds of reasons to get us the other person to probably run into this, uh, in my mind. So the solution that we talked about, well, it's actually going back to my next one, your question. Let's come up, A, uh, timely. The most, like Stacy said, if you can't create a timely portion, you're going to have to define this as an incomplete parent report. So she prints it on eleven thirteen. It's incomplete for the month, it's not, she picks one of September thirty. But it can be said that it's complete, correct, eleven thirteen? And then what article it might be is two, three months. Now, you go back later and say, we want to read the purchase report back from the middle of nine thirty. And the only reason you would do that is that an audit boss appears and says, give me the client's reports. And they audited, they didn't have. That's all.
Yeah, that's what we need to back here, make sure we're doing it right. I want to go back to, this is on page three, of the financial statement, the Cedars that you and I were talking about. It was that tax pool Cedars, if you ever want.
Ah.
You can see that the annual budget for Cedars interest is eighteen hundred and forty-eight dollars. So if you look at the interest income totals, so the year-to-date actual is thirty thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars. New first, tax pool, and other interest break. You're right that Cedars isn't in there yet, but Nicole created all those accounts that were calculated. Each account due to fund use, they're there, but she didn't finish, uh, posting the information, the, the interest in that. Just, just slightly, that you can see that we budgeted twenty-four ninety-eight from there. We posted in the fund you thirty thousand, two ninety-two. The item was missing, just Cedars. Tax pool has posted fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents this year. So we're keeping track of it, but we certainly have some to add. Off, we have staff of statements that goes in the balance fund. A part of that you see on the financial statement, make sure you read that.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Financial report on tax pool is, so far this is really like a top interest group. So, like you stated, like you stated, it's tax pool, so it's very big actually. Fifteen, uh, four. A lot of interest in the bank. Sure, Eric, I'm not saying anything other than, I don't know, it's very complicated part of the report. And the disparate pieces are very big to me. Cedars and new birds and maybe the different money. The needs that's the positive. And you got interest.
Ask all the experts here, man. I agree. All right, any other questions about the financial statement?
Just a quick question on, 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 I'm assuming you have that kind of, of labels or something.
The same report you gave.
Or see, right?
Oh, the second line down.
Yes, third line down.
Sure. So that includes. Money that's incurred. That was incurred. So for example, you have two hundred thousand dollars set aside for roads. It's not spent, so it won't match there. But that's where the, it's currently going to come on that side.
I'm interested. Sorry, what line was that?
Uh, the second line, other revenue sources on page one.
Okay, got it. We're getting ten on revenue?
Yeah.
Very much.
So other revenue sources is the money that's incurred from that year's budget. This one's not.
I guess I can read what's everything within the book. Read this page. Now, page two, page one. We should just say that, seven times, or six.
Yeah.
Is that the same thing? No, just make sure it's, it's a four week ad. I'll read this to you. Sorry. No, no, just make sure. Thank you. I didn't, you know.
Different account from page two.
Great.
All right.
And all, all the other, too, we talked about, uh, where it's the same point franchise, can't be losing earlier. That actually comes from flawless access. It's the only one. It's A, correct? Correct. So that's just basically, you get, you know, from what I said, I'm just going to straighten it up.
They're done through journal entry, so, uh, we're working on streamlining that process. We're working on that. So we just streamline that process and make it simpler. We, you have to remember, we were playing catch-up on a lot of things to get last year's audit. When I showed up, August, we were playing catch-up, hurry up and try and get everything to the audit. So things that were supposed to be up, it's current. Just kind of wait because we have to get the audit. We have to play catch-up. I'm hoping by January. That's really, uh, I am setting for myself that things are more caught up and done and in the time needed to show up.
I think we're more worried about finishing this year by December, so we can start the audit. We don't have any time left.
So, but it's, it's not on the agenda, so I'm not going to go far, but just be sure that the audit process is already.
Yes. Okay. Good.
Okay. All right, any other questions on the financial statement? September. All right, do you have a motion?
I'm, so.
On, on, Angela? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Do you want to hear this? I V is the monthly sales tax report. It's actually a quarterly financial report, said monthly. That's the one that we receive from Revenue Management Services. I don't have any specific updates for you other than what's in the packet in Brian's sentence.
So I did, the only question I have on? Make that what they answer, but I'll make sure, so like, I'll just say page ten. It's tax files, September twenty twenty-five. And now notice Walmart showing up. I'm starting to get over some Walmarts and I, uh, I'm sure A, A C B has, that's what everybody else had to do. So I'm assuming things like the Walmarts and the U N's on. Also, I keep remembering guys, make, he helped make sure we're getting those stocks. But my address is Walmart. So, uh, I find that A interesting because Walmart, I had a lot of pretty big numbers and I thought it would show up. Very interesting, he was a artist.
All right, okay, that's delivery here.
Delivery, yeah.
He does a lot, I mean, that's what we're made.
Yeah.
Is the, um, key card addresses within our area. Not let that sales tax dollar go to Wallace, it belongs to.
So actually, if it goes to Walmart, of course, that, who else, that, we have to computer.
Yeah, that's right.
Nine ninety-five Walmart, and it's off.
Okay, I'm sorry. Of course, it's got the historical allocations and comparisons. Like usual, on the very last page, on thirteen, there's a chart with the sales tax allocation comparisons from twenty eighteen now. So last three, four, I'm sorry, last month was thirty thousand, four seventy-one, which is in August twenty now. And September is heading back up, so thirty-six thousand, eight thirty-six. Same time last year, weren't really in that same position. Those months were slowing down, lagging, September obviously, November. So I hope that optimism continues because that will be helpful to us to work on here.
Down there?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate the point, and that's the policy of this, not in scope, all of this, because that's. My only question is that this great report, overall, sales tax information about what's happening.
Yes.
Is there a page that I missed that says, for the effectiveness of this, not about the month, it's where he and the government is for uniform, this, quote, and his payment. But he does work for us, right? Not just to produce his report. Not just to produce his report, fine, or he wants human markets and professionals.
Right.
So where do I see the effectiveness of your report?
There is, it might be in a different version. There's a public information version and not public. So I'll look it up.
Yeah, we looked that one through.
I remember seeing.
It was a pretty good number.
He's also going to be here in December to give the fiscal year.
Yeah. Okay.
So it will be the same quarter will be included, and he's going to present on the holder, which will be nuts. All righty. Do we have a motion on the quarterly sales tax report?
Just want to make sure, I'll make a motion through.
Accepting.
Accepting, yeah. If I make a motion, it's accepted. Present.
Justin, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that's enough. All right, the final one is quarterly financial report. This is the report that he prepared in the office using the statements that come in for all of our bank accounts. Julie is a preparer this month, or this quarter. I want to point out a couple of these. On New First I C S, the column, which is the second line down, the column that says beginning balance previous quarter. There was a typographical error in months in the version that we received by email. Slightly different than this one, I think, with five thousand dollars. So this will be corrected version. And then when you go down, the city of Simonton, the first line that says New First Cedars, and it doesn't have a descriptor at the back. So one of us says city of Simonton, in one of us is capital improvement. It has five hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents in it. Just for your knowledge, that one in July, didn't renew before the date that it expired. So the money goes to I C S, we rolled it into a new Cedars, so it's account number change. Didn't lose anything. Money is not sitting in I C S, compare it where, why is it not an investment? It's any investment, but if you're following account numbers in your ongoing reports, quarter to quarter, it'll have a new account number. So it's documented in the statements that come from the bank, and it's just an F Y I.
You left, so you left everything with the last digits. The last digits are, I, I, I'm other account number, it's just going to be exact to the same.
The last digits will change.
Right. So.
We don't put the last two.
Really?
Right.
That's fine. Uh, the only thing I think we talked about, I'm going to have to ask, when it started, in the end, for taxes, we had a thing to talk about. There's seven days, nowhere, it wasn't back in the day, so. Seven days, I've got to send it from right back. I'm definitely doing, doing that.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions on this one? All right, page two.
Wait, I'm sorry, I did have, I'm sorry, I did have, I was just waiting, I thought you had. Uh, the same, if you, if you actually prepare, uh, on the equal page, I'm sorry, the equal page, prepare for this page. And here's their interest base to the change on the quarterly financial report, you will find that the interest amounts are absolutely the same as the change. But not on all accounts. And just like the one you mentioned about the, uh, not the new, whatever, the seven days, that would change the interest amount by a day. So I sat with Julie, went over this, tried to understand why the previous quarter, this quarter, the beginning balance is different, and started to do that. And I said, okay, so I'll look at the interest base and find, so why isn't the exact changes that came to the interest, I found out, some different. Some of them short, you had others that expired, you have the new. The biggest thing, I guess, is that there are other things at play in the capital is the interest. And it's done on a calendar basis, every month, quarter, fiscal basis. We'll do, the interest for Cedars is going to close, and that's what we did. Some of them did pay closes, some of them did not. So again, it complicates the heck up, you know, create a report, turn it back on any given day. Because you don't have all the details, what's, what's the spendings on the time? And you did too, when you created.
Right.
So, all the other, I'm going to have one in glory, is that the, uh, there are no checks written out of Wallace Bank. Wallace Bank has Cinepoint basically on the front end, priced for thirty-two million.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is, I'm looking at balance, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars in Wallace Bank. I'm thinking, okay, we just talked about taking money from E C or somebody else, or somebody else, or other basic, others, or anything else. That's a lot of money that's getting zero interest.
That's what we talked about, the very budget for potential, because it's available. For growth, and we were talking about whether funding at that time.
Yeah, then we talked about taking it from somewhere else, and the contribution from the senior court.
Yeah, we talked about several things, but we talked about that in particular, just to your point, yes, it's available for projects or accounts.
Yeah, I'll just bring back, you know, this is financial report, right? You don't, we need financial, you know, you just have to, you know, at least thirty-four percent of the law, personally, the dollars, not any of it.
Right.
You don't buy any tax dollars. All right, lastly, another merit is that on the, this report, I consider it just not being complete, here's the reason. On the bottom, where we actually list, we list sales tax, mixed beverage, equipment, cap, and asset alarm. It's not complete, or is it missing?
Right. Yeah.
It's missing permits, it's missing, missing deposits, and missing franchisees. Those are, should be in the numbers, should come listed, so some new shows. So if we added that, it's a true, complete picture of the China's on this page, which is financial report. It's not really, it's really, it's really.
There, you know, the point of this, to show where money, where are making now? We just completely leave that, if the customer doesn't want to see it, it's just something that we had to, maybe, to have a snapshot of it.
All we have to come to that is that E C R is not in here, it can't balance this, it can't do it all. Can't balance this. So, these can't. So that.
Right, so the balance to the bank, like you would at home. Versus fund you, balancing to the bank.
Right, so.
I'm agreeing with you that that's the same, we're not stopping fund re-function on here.
Very suspect, everything, there. But I don't know, council can consider, whether you want a true picture of that, including all, all the impermanence, deposits, franchisees. It's good to be done by me. If I'd be there more after picture, part take off, I would probably, so I'm not standing there. And.
So council, this is, I'm just going to ask, where do we define? Item Z, Eric mentioned, is there a reason that you're not in here, or is it just not something that's moving?
That I'm not honestly sure about, I know this is the report, we use the I R S on council.
Say again, sorry.
This report was created in the I R S on council, I mean, uh, and I'm not sure why they're not. I think it's a preference of what council would like to see. Do you want to see your sales tax side again? So, yeah, everyone, do you want them to stay, or do they go, doesn't matter?
We just look at, yeah, that's why I just wanted to make sure. Normally, it was.
Correct. These, these items that are on here are normally put into the general ledger directly by journal entry. They're not put in on, uh, permits are on the, they're taken in across the counter, so they're cash receiving. These items here are entered journal entry, so they're not on the actual A P financial statement. So that's why they're on this financial statement. Does that make sense? Right. Right. Right.
Um, and you have to, these are put in, these are put in, on the.
Yes, yes.
You put in, you.
Yes.
You got a prepping solid. Put in, certainly.
Connect with that.
All of the permits and both deposits.
Permits come in under cash receiving, because it's across the counter paper.
Right.
Equipment, cap, sales caps, asset alarm, and mixed beverage are all entered into fund you, the, the journal entry, which they go right on to the G O. The financial statement report that you guys get, that you print out, is from the A P side, accounts payable side. This report is a reflection of the general ledger, so they're different reports.
Are they?
And they're just snapshots, yes. Each is a snapshot of various things. The A P financial report is a snapshot of what is going on on the accounts payable. This is a report that you show me what's going on, more or less on the general ledger. And I do have an answer about T M R S. Yes, Cheyenne is salary, anybody with this salary, it's taken out per paycheck. Some months have three paychecks. So T M R S can be taken out three times. October was one of those months. So September, we had two paychecks, October had three, there's, there's like four months that had three paychecks.
Was that in two weeks, it started?
Yes, and every other month.
She did twenty-six paycheck, right?
Yes. That sounds set. So T M R S will fluctuate depending on the number of paychecks due, because it's per paycheck, not per section. Got it?
Good.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm sorry it took me a minute to remember. That's all right. So going forward, is there any consensus for council about if you want to remove the box and sharing sales tax information, if it's an execution, and it's extra, or do you want? All right.
Do you have any consensus today?
Not yet. We can leave it for now, if you want to make changes, we can certainly relax. All right, any other questions on the quarterly financial report? Do we have a motion? Or just in?
Aye.
Thank you, Anthony. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Anthony, I'm scared. All right, moving on to item five, new business. Discussion and possible action to approve T P I A vexations request, request for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one zero. Bill, I'm going to hand it over to you, sir, to explain. Will you read it out first?
Uh, no, it's, it's by ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten. Uh, it's a public information policy to manage assessment, repetitive requests, request for public information. Journal speaking, chapter five fifty-two, which is the, the Texas Government Code, that talks about meeting our public information. Specifically, five fifty-two point two seven five already allows for government bodies, uh, when needed, to establish time limits and cover government mechanisms for public information requests. It's been, uh, mentioned by a couple of council members up to this point about potentially needing to look at adding an ordinance that establishes what, uh, five fifty-two point two seven five allows. Um, a couple of notes on this, this doesn't really add anything that doesn't already, or doesn't add anything that doesn't already exist in the state code. Um, there's some processes that if adopted, need to happen going forward. I've already kind of mentioned some of those to Cheyenne and more, but they're on that. But it's, it's every request, there's, you know, it's, it's just, if any request that comes in, it's going to be assessed against a timeline and, um, have to be recorded. You know, if it takes two hours to, um, process a request, they do all the time, it's allowed to it, and if the copies, et cetera, and send it. Then that individual who put in the request will receive a letter that says, uh, at this time, you've used two of your thirty-six hours. And then, you know, so you know, after the thirty-six hour mark, um, that's considered, uh, you know, an additional request beyond that time, which can be charged. Uh, so it doesn't, again, it doesn't create anything additional, it just gives the time to find and time to redact the actual exceptions. Those are the only two things you can charge for, um, which is, uses what it takes. And then the city's going to provide that request with that tally mark, because they've got, so every request that comes in, they're going to be updated. You've now used three hours of your, you know, of the, before thirty-six kicks in. So what kicks in at thirty-six hours is really, is really the question, right? So currently, under, uh, under state law, and this shall remain, any, uh, public information request is going to cost the city over a certain threshold, it's a hundred dollar threshold. Right, they do the analysis and say, hey, this is what we're going to have to collect, this is how many personnel hours we're going to have to do. You can send a letter to the requester in state, um, this is how much it's going to request, the city to fulfill this request. If you want us to fill this request, you will, but you have to pay first, right? That's sort of the, the trigger. Well, what this codifies is that once any individual requester has reached that thirty-six hour mark, no matter how long the process is going to take, let's say you're, you're thirty-sixth hour, and you send in a request, and it's only going to take five minutes, say an hour. You can send that letter saying, this is going to take one hour, it's going to be, cost five dollars, whatever the, the cost is, and the state sets the limits, and that's why the administrative code is in there, there's certain amount of thresholds. You can't just be like, oh, that's for a million dollars, you know, that's what they, it's controlled. And then that holds the request, kind of like the timeline, until that requestor pays after that thirty-six hour mark. So that's really what changes, is it, it, it puts that thirty-six hour mark, and it puts the requester on notice that after it reaches thirty-six total hours of time spent on that individual's request, then, um, if they're going to have to pay before the request is given. That, that's just the difference. Um, cities can choose as a policy to charge at that first hour, right, the hour one. Um, all that would mean is you send in the requests, or you send back the responsive information, say this took, you know, one hour, please send five dollars to the city, but here's also your requested information. Right, and then the difference is after the thirty-sixth hour, it's, it's going to be five dollars, and until you pay, then we will give you the requested information. That makes it, kind of puts, it shifts that, that timeline to where it's not only those requests that are going to take the substantial burden of time. So it kind of aggregates it at this point, instead of just looks at each individual request. Uh, obviously, if the, uh, if the city gets it wrong, like if this, it says, oh, this is going to take five hours, and it turns out it takes one hour, um, but the person has paid the five hour value, the city will refund those remaining four hours, which is a natural, oh, it only took. And again, every time, um, Cheyenne responds to one of these requests, it'll be a letter that states, you know, thank you for your request, Mr. Phil, Mr. Phil Blank. Um, you have, you, you know, based on our records, you have, you know, you stayed a total of ten hours at this point in, in time to fulfill your requests. Um, after the thirty-six hour mark, it will be, you know, we'll, we'll charge for that kind of thing. And I'll, I'll help draft that language, and it's just like a typical agent letter. Um, the recourse is, of course, the individual can, can reach out to the city and say, no, no, I haven't, you know, what is this, what, that sort of thing. Or of course, just like a charge of, you know, greater than a hundred dollars, they can reach out to the A G, and the A G can do an assessment, whether or not those values were assessed correctly, or it's overcharged, or anything like that. So they have the, the same recourse you would, um, put into the state, state law.
So Bill, is, well, that is for anonymous, I'm assuming?
Please step about the supportive material on the slide.
Oh, no, you're fine, I don't know.
Well.
Oh, no, you're fine, I don't know, well, no, no problem.
Just the photo ID.
I'll fix it anyway.
So, I just wanted to say before you get to that, but you can do it in whatever order. Would you address what, the explanation about anonymous or unidentified requesters?
Oh, yeah, yeah, let me, and I don't know if that'll, I'll, I'll try to speak to the photo ID in a moment, I do not prep that part. But, um, so, so anonymous requesters, so the way anonymous requesters are handled is because they're anonymous, um, you can't know who they are to assess, and they don't have to reveal, and that's fine. Um, uh, the first step would be that Cheyenne would reach out and ask, gee, would you like to remain anonymous? Or are you willing to provide me a name in order that I can keep a proper log of your time request? Um, if the individual chooses to remain anonymous, that's fine. It triggers that letter-first, payment-first. Regardless of how many, there's not like a running tally for anonymous, right?
Right.
Um, and it's anonymous based on the requester, it's not tied to an email address, or phone number, or mailing address, or anything like that, it's just based on the name of the requester. And so, um, that anonymous just triggers sort of at that beginning, because you don't know who it is, and you don't know how to, to keep a log of, of anonymous, right? And so, so like, I have to, I'm anonymous, and I have to, you know, her, five dollars, whatever, and she said, put her name, and she gets her name. That's probably correct.
So you're saying you didn't have to?
No, no, she said, you can ask her name, if she corrects it, I'm not gonna.
She needs to pay up.
And you can say, no, I'm anonymous, right? So if I want her to remain anonymous, right, I have to put thirty-six hours of anonymous request with the same name for the anonymous part to kick in, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
So do you want to say again, Bill?
Yeah, no, so anonymous, because it's not tied to any one requester, is treated, it doesn't have to reach the thirty-six hour threshold.
I'm sorry, I used the word anonymous. I used fake names. We have several names that came through that, it's just obvious that they're fake names. So I have a fake name, she not even asked, not asking me the real name. You can't prove it, you're right, you cannot prove my name, title, whatever it was, is anonymous. So what do we do? Title, all you can do is have the thirty-six hour, you mean, start charging her account.
Well, no, it's not that, charge the reasonable, it's that, it's that, yeah, sorry. Yeah, well, I actually look at somebody.
So how would they?
Hey.
Still, it's the name.
Name.
Is that where the, probably. Use a name?
I have a name.
So Bill, Andy's question is, how would some anonymous pay their?
Yeah, admittedly, great question, I have to answer, because that's a valid point, like, what, how are they gonna pay the five dollars if they're not gonna remain anonymous?
Well, I have to tell you, I won't ask the council, I won't go to the maximum, per time, I have forty percent first hour mark. That's what I'm gonna do.
They have a.
You can't, you can't, uh, write this, pay towards the per time, it's worth, right?
No, they can't charge for their time.
Yeah.
Now, we can charge first out, that was the series most longest ever. I call, I call.
You can call it single.
No, Cheyenne, stop.
Okay, so you're on this. It's the time, what's charged is the time to find it and the time to redact. But those, that's, that's what's included in the question. So how long it takes to find the requested documents, and how long, you know, to, and then how long it takes to actually redact information that come on all requests, either from the person you know when they request. Bill starts at that point.
It's not Bill, Cheyenne.
So, I didn't say Bill, I said Bill.
Oh, I said, I didn't say Bill.
That's okay.
I can't hear you, like, who's Bill?
So that's, that's the level of discretion that I was mentioning that the city has. So after the thirty-six hours, definitively, the letter is sent, and no action is taken until that's paid. Prior to that thirty-six hours, the council can still choose to have a policy where you don't charge. Now, we're gonna have to inform the individual, hey, you're, you're at two hours, you're at three hours, you're at five hours, that sort of thing, right? So if it's a known individual, that's gonna be part of what Cheyenne has to send, that this is five hours. So it could either be from the get-go, that first request, or we can wait to that thirty-six hour mark and then not take action until we receive a half of that.
So Cheyenne, my power, but that, I'll just use that, I want PIA, and I want whatever, so maybe like take two hours. And these two hours.
So she gets the.
It would have to be, um, I mean, yeah, it's gonna be an added step, because you're gonna have to keep some sort of documentation per person. I mean, I have a spreadsheet now of everything, it's all in one spreadsheet, but I, I'm not gonna be able to document how many hours. And then, am I correctly understanding that this is per year?
Yes, and.
In, in calendar?
Like, no, like a rolling game.
So, question here, so, so does this mean that, that say she gives, we got this, she gets a request, that request is going to take nineteen hours? Does that mean that she's gotta start a stopwatch, start some kind of time tracking, complete that full task without interruption? And then end the, the, whatever timing device she has, so that you've got allocated time to make sure there's no interruption?
No, she just has to keep, there's no expectation that, like, she starts a clock and runs only, does only that job until it's done. It's just a matter of, like, coming back to it. So, but keep track of that, so like, if you spent two hours on it today, and then you went on to something else, and tomorrow you spend an hour on it, that's three hours, and then the next day you spend another hour, it's four hours, request ready, send it, that I spent four hours on this request.
Well, it's not, it's, you have.
I just think, I do think that it's gonna be a lot of spreadsheets, there's gonna be a lot of.
Yes.
And, and you're saying, so, like, you say a roll calendar, so let's say that the first, the first time I get a request from Andy is November the first, and I'm counting this thirty-six hours till next November thirty-first.
Right.
Not till, like, it's rolling policies, yeah.
Her, her request or?
Yes, her person.
Her request.
Her request, and so that's gonna get really complicated.
It is, it is very, it is very complex.
Council have that first thirty-six even in here, or can we just start?
So you have, you have to have the first thirty-six in order to, you have to track the hours. So you don't, again, you don't have to charge those first thirty-six, or I guess, yeah, thirty-six. And then it's after the thirty-seventh hour, or I guess thirty-six point one, that then the letter goes out that says, this is gonna take, and it's just like the estimates we do for the ones that are, you know, like, you mentioned nineteen hours coming in. It's a good chance a nineteen-hour request is gonna receive a letter of a greater than a hundred dollar letter anyways, right? Like, that's, that's, that doesn't replace that aspect if a huge request comes in, like, oh, this is gonna take, you know, a long time, you need to pay first.
And today, today we do that, we do that today.
You can do that today, but it has to reach that threshold of a certain cost amount to start.
So we have that set.
Right, and that counts towards the hour of its total.
Question to Cheyenne, Cheyenne, do you have any idea of all the requests that have been compiled or, uh, how many were from the same person that identified as a recent, or if it's all?
I don't know, I have to look back through it. Um, specifically, I couldn't tell you how many hours I spent on any one person's request, because I've been bouncing all over the place with different ones to be on. There's a lot of things that ended up wanting, like, the same information, so how do you go back, pull it in? Maybe it's, it's really back and forth, and if, if we end up doing this where I'm gonna track the thirty-six hours, I'm definitely gonna have to change the way I do things a little bit, so that I can appropriately track how many hours I'm working on each one.
But you can get close, you know, if they want to kill, you know, to, to.
Yeah, I mean, I could definitely get close, and I just, I just have to change the way I do things, and then there's gonna be additional spreadsheet.
But the hope, that I wanna use is this much crap, it's tracking out one to legitimate requests. Because I know I bounced around to, I did, but, I mean, seriously, letter to agents, the Dan jumps from two thousand, two thousand sixteen, all the same crap, the cars, the mayor, the, you know, it's all been out there, and now we go all the way back to the day. They don't have any best friend, agree, but I don't care what he is, I can do anything about it. I can only do what I thought I'm telling, or for me. So if we start charging for the first hour, maybe we can stop some of this. And if they want to keep on, they say, hey, you're top, you're a citizen, hey, you're salary, not even, hey, you're guys' salary, but you're doing all this. Now, a citizen has the right to ask about this, but we've added transparency, we've added a better, we have a little more work to do. But this is not the end, so I'm ready to start charging how I want, which we have the right. But whatever the council says, and I don't want to, I'm a feeder, you want all this information, I'm like, for it because the citizens are paying for it. You really do, yeah. So that's my hope, that it just gets out of legitimate PIA. So Andy, can you ask a question of, is there a limit on the smaller ones that's been drawn, you want to? You gotta, you gotta try them all the same. So when I talk to the attorney general, she said, I have to be the same. Hour one, hour one, in short, and Bill, while we're in scruples, but hour one is the same, you request one even off. I'll just say thirty dollars, whatever, thirty dollars. If you request all of the crap, pretty city cats, starts hour one, that's what takes more than that, but you start the third time. For Bill, for hour one.
For hour one.
And if it's two, three, four hours, I don't remember if that threshold, there's competition, it's much, it's trying to be much. I think we can charge per hour, right? She says it takes three hours, we'll charge thirty-six.
Yeah, I thi- I think there's a minimum floor, and I'd have to look that up, I think it's like a two-hour requirement.
Over forty, I believe it's over forty.
Well, that's, that's the kicker, that's, that's, that's the kicker for, for, yeah, for forty dollars.
So up to forty dollars in, if it's gonna take more time, we need to let the PIA request, you know, hey, this is gonna take four hours, and you have said the letter.
I'm not concerned, right, I'm not concerned about the big ones, because yes, you gotta absolutely, there's just something about, the ones that are large, I'm concerned about, uh, which is particularly normal, people that have looked at this before all this crap.
All for one, one for all. You know, just call us, we'll pay them, I just wanna know the facts.
I do.
This is the second question. So, all the mayor, city hall, Cheyenne, based on those. But it turned into a formal PIA request.
So first of all, okay, so we give an example, person walks in, the office not found, I'd like to look at, next slide, see if, just look at it, take it. That's a request. What happens?
They're gonna wait till I can find it, and I'll call them back to come look at it, because I'm not gonna stop what I'm doing to go find whatever it is right there. But they can come view it, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they can come examine it physically, personally, yeah.
What's the trouble?
I don't think they have a choice.
Is it a public viewing? Public viewing, I'm, I'm a member of the public, I walk in, I'd like to see, let's just say, the minutes. You should get the minutes, right, though, we might even do a website, or a website, yeah. So if it's something that's not actually published, like you said, we'll do another time to publish for more, then we'll read it, receive it, have a write to it, and then we have to walk in and ask for it.
It actually has to be in writing, though. It's, it's weird, yeah. It can be written on a napkin, or a lot of shoes, or whatever you want, but it does have to be in writing, yeah, just.
Is that true? Uh, you have to receive the request for in public information.
As you're walking, is that different or not?
Just view it in person?
I think it's.
Yeah, I want the request in writing.
So here's, here's part of what's happening here, and everybody, not just Eric, this is your last. The sun comes going from, we all are willing to share everything we can, and we're sure, I'll find it in Sunday, and I know we're definitely pulling it to you right now, to a few people, probably grassing, and absorbing so much time, and now we're having to do this discussion. And so, I will say, well, let's not talk about who's the victim around here. Sure.
Now, again, you come, the mayor feels over the last four years.
But I, I would just say, as, as long as we can, I would still like Symington to be that small town, we're still under a thousand people, I don't have any aspirations to charge every person who wants every document, so I'm thinking, you can certainly call and ask a question if I don't understand. Figure that, um, I dealt, they will work on it.
Yeah, I know.
But we have to be consistent, we have to, and we have been very, very good like that, and very consistent and documented. We've had great people who've been custodians of record, done a great job with that. This particularly is, let's address vexatious requester, because it's gotten so significant that our city secretary is covered up with this, and he isn't able to do other things, and one of the things, the other, he's, she's on clock for this kind of request. And the council wants to address, so Andy's request about, let's pick those two things, and let's manage those two things, and I think what Bill's written, of course, the ordinance addresses the first one, I don't know if there's any additional language that you think is necessary to address the second.
It wasn't the second, it started in hour one, it started in day one.
No, that's, that's the policy you adopt, so this, this ordinance allows for it to start at hours.
So how, so we just said, right, at hour one, or you?
No, you don't say, the rate's set by the state.
It's fifteen.
Yeah, the, the rate's set by the state, that's the admin code.
I thought it was, uh, time plus twenty percent, you're saying fifteen dollars.
You can add twenty percent on top of whatever we charge for hour, for overtime. So if you, you worked twelve hours on it, twelve times, whatever twelve times fifteen is, times twenty percent, and that can be your bonus.
But when you said, the charge, said by state, fifty dollars an hour, is, is then we add the twenty percent?
And you can add the twenty percent.
If we, sure.
Yep.
What's in that?
The twenty percent is.
So.
Well, I thought it was.
That I understand, I think it's that, well, I've never seen anything like that.
I've seen it.
The, uh, code that they send us, the code seven, that three.
The last time I did a process, they definitely said twenty percent of the total.
And so that they'll send us some near twenty?
Yeah.
Oh, we don't have.
Yeah, yeah.
The thing I learned, that if they're part of the state party, the student has to give everybody, you know, pay it off. Yeah, state.
Yeah, just.
State desperately tries to keep up in some areas, and then behinds and others, so, if anybody wants CDs, buy all the requested. Walmart, buy them, if you get a buyout at Walmart.
We have to get a burger.
To get a burger first.
Yeah, yeah. Actual time, you want to take, um, make the late, uh.
Yeah.
We just want to. So the best thing is she would have to estimate how much time it would take, twenty-three hours, fifteen, thirty, forty-five, times twenty percent. Think, they, they, they're only being that high.
Uh, well, again, under, under the thirty-six hour mark, if, at the first hour, the request comes in, and let's say it takes one hour, let's just use easy numbers, it costs ten bucks. Easy numbers. Cheyenne would send a letter, then inform, with the response, response of information, that informs the requester, this took one hour. I don't know, I've logged your information, thank you, this took one hour, you owe the city ten dollars. But with the information, after the thirty-sixth hour, it would be that letter, this is going to take five hours, like that cost estimate, this is gonna take five hours. You've exceeded your thirty-six, this is gonna estimate it costs five hours, your charge is this, and we won't respond until you pay the charge. Does that make sense? So, the, the first thirty, thirty-six, you still respond, and it's actual hours, actual hours it took.
So when it's her spending four hours and paying.
Right. And what do you do? Right, I'm sorry, what, what's the?
So, hold on, so she, so you're, you're saying she's had to do the work.
Right.
Then send the letter, hey, it took me four hours, so the charge is, or sixty bucks, that's what?
Yeah, whatever.
And they, they just say, no, I don't want to pay it, so they don't get the information for the officer.
No, at that time, they've received the information, and if they refuse to pay it, then we can refuse later requests.
Okay. So that puts us on a refusal, no?
Yeah, and, and I, I will admit, I am ninety percent confident in that answer I just gave, that's something I've already admitted to the mayor, that I was a blind spot, and so I would get that answer back. But it, it logically makes sense to me, not that legislation always makes logical sense, but it makes sense to me to be able to do, you have this previous, like with permits, right? You apply for a permit, you get it, you don't pay for it, come in for another permit, guess what? No. Uh, and so, but, but again, I, I don't want to go down on record saying that that's definitive, I don't have that in front of me.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah. You refuse free information, that's maybe five dollars, I think that's it. Right, it gets more complex, so I, I want to be able to give the right answer.
Yeah, we want to be fair, but also our, uh, we got work to do, she got to do. And then they crack about not getting stuff done, so, there you go. So, let's, let's get that definitive answer. I mean, I'm only wanting, oh, you guys could say, huh, I won't charge, uh, one. Because we are paying Cheyenne to start. But if you don't have that answer, I think we're past, we can pass taxation tonight, we'd have to come back and then do our own ordinance for cost.
No, the cost would be, what's in the, I think, not, not your forty dollars, what's in that code?
Oh, so we just say by code, which is up to fifteen dollars, that's what?
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever's captured. So this recovered, we charge, we can choose fifteen or five, ten, right?
I think it should have to be fifteen, I don't think that.
And what's next to these?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the cost isn't in discretion, what's in discretion is when you start charging.
Hour one. Pushing.
Oh, wait. Spider pie. Andy, if Spider Pie would answer that, it's actually, it's in the code, you're saying, truth, when it starts, you have to decide. Now, does that mean we do a resolution to go with this, or if just, when we pass this, it automatically?
See, when you, when you pass this, including that in the motion, it's not?
We have to include it in the motion.
Not only that, not the resolution.
Yeah, ordinance.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We have to.
Not the ordinance, but where are the ordinance discussed? Yeah, the, do you need the ordinance to start staring at the first one? Good. You read the ordinance, what's it? Okay, sorry, so the ordinance says, we're looking at a cost recovery, says, uh, the threshold exceeded, charge exceeded forty dollars, all of them, for example, bar, uh, oh, that's fine. So what Andy just asked, he says, I want to do it from hour one, where is that in the ordinance? Oh, that, that's captured in five five two point two seven five, so it's an integration to the state code. So in that. And you can suspend, but you should have reread my own ordinance, uh, section B, suspension request, if the requester fails to pay out full charges, the city may refuse to process additional requests until payment is made.
I knew I read that somewhere. So do we have to amend this? And I'm still with Eric, I'm like, I, I guess, the five five two seven five, allow us to charge fifteen bucks. But I guess it's not the five five.
So.
That was just, oh, that's wrong.
I'm using, just because I'm, make the motion?
No.
Okay.
I was hurt.
Hi.
It's, I'm using fifty dollars for the state. This is saying, this is telling us, your charge, if you choose, charge the state.
Right, but we can't charge anymore.
So we don't have to put fifty dollars.
No, we can, we can, because it's tied to what the state wants.
So it says to you?
Yes.
It also has some arguments.
Oh, it's.
If Phil, if reading it right, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Of course, now, if I'm reading this right, that anything less than fifty pages, this is paragraph two, uh, page, page three. It states, a labor charge shall not be billed, and connection will comply with these requests, and for fifty or fewer pages of paper records. So if somebody requests something for forty-eight pages, and you can't charge, is that correct? The overhead charge.
Overhead.
The overhead charge is on fifty pages.
Cool.
Two says an overhead charge shall not be made for the request.
Oh, you may be in the wrong.
That's in page, page seven, it's play overhead.
Six.
Page, page three.
What's number of page three?
Well, it's the, it's paragraph two.
Yeah.
Or it's number two.
Which one?
Three, eight. So most of them, well, that's, that's if something is two more, that's.
Okay, yeah.
You can sort it.
You would just charge actual, you would just charge whatever the, the cost of copies, or something like that.
It's not, but you can't charge for labor.
Right, if it's less than.
Lower. And so if someone puts in six, or less than fifty pages, intentionally, I would charge the page.
They do all of the same, maybe it's one.
Right, it's one, one request, but it's still, you still, you still accumulate hours. So then once you reach thirty-six.
Okay, so this is in production, but you can't charge until it's, after number eighty-six, you start the automatic cost. So, that's what it is. Cheyenne, understand all this? Long reason why I ask, is that it's complicated, even, it's a lot of work for you, we word about work for you.
I mean, it's all gonna be a lot of work for me, clearly, so.
So Andy, that was essentially, we want to reduce burden from the PIRs, but what if we actually appreciate that amount of work, and we come, we come bust through?
You can always readdress this.
Not listen to the ordinance, you gotta, gotta, you know.
At least we're getting our time paid back, so if we have to hire, the reason I'm, if we have to hire a city secretary that doesn't produce the work on there, the second part of this, at least we're providing funding for another position to just do PIA for us, that's what the city's operating. Citizens want to do the cost, we're gonna pay for it.
I don't think citizens want to do that. I'm gonna give you on the fact that we got a probability.
So this, this is the one thing.
Early to find my, my eight, having to go back to January the first, my one, my one, my house, and the property, and the, and the script, right? So, I suggest that if there's been a victim, I've been, you probably, and the quality, at some point, you're a victim, I say, just. I don't know, it's just hard, I like this, I like the principle, I like the fact that they start charging, I like the fact that there's government tools to apply. The only thing that I concern myself with is that, may have parts not. Our, our organization, right, it will find, organization tools, it's probably using itself. Right? Drop track. There's.
I mean, laws, we practice kind of time, all the time, if we could get some law offices, attorneys.
Oh, no, I think about.
There's some of this, but we could learn about if we need that.
As soon as he says hello, that's a true.
You'll think about that.
Phone, call me, that's.
It's not every minute, it's not, and she will keep the law.
Right.
Probably all the same people. You know, I'm hoping this gets law out, at least we're paying fines, almost, not paying, uh, it's not covered, our city's office, at least it's covered, force us. But maybe, you know, how many times we have to get credit cards for twenty twenty-three, it's out there. I think it's been out, they're all out there, name and your stuff. We gotta do something, and I think this is the start, and actually, we're probably under by the state, right? And Cheyenne's like, I'm bored of working out, I'm a little bit stressed. But if we kept this down, longer too, but it's never that thing, but we get it. I think, fine, oh.
I can figure it out, it's just gonna, it's one thing, I mean, I can, it's just gonna be a little bit of a new system, it can be done, it's up to you.
So if it is charged, how do we pay? You're happy, I check, I'll check off, we, we have, we have a separate logic.
You have the ability to send a pay link, so someone can pay out, like, that's for permits right now, but I'm sure that we could make it work, or, um.
So the pay link, yeah, hey.
Yes.
Pay link is not, what's in the simulink?
I don't.
Yes.
I know.
I usually put like, I'm, I'm, like, any, if, if, something like that.
Well, usually, providers are, pay link is same, we can email, we can leave, as we will.
But you can just go, it's on the website, you literally just put pay, pay my, and it's for permits, and I will send the customer their, their permit number, they put their permit number in there, and it tells how much they owe. Now, what happened to the backside of that? I don't know. I don't know where their data is being stored, or even if being stored for, you know, what credit card is used, who is blocked.
You just ask, correct, it's all, it's permanent, for PIS.
Right, it would have to be something where they, I would tell them, you owe money, this much money, put this P A, and they'd have to put their P A, and we would have to figure it out.
So all over complicated, probably two things, right? Can we, I have that in mind, we have permit, making, can we do PIS?
How would you chance to fund you? And, and you can probably add any, a thing in there on, uh, cash proceeding, that says for permits, and you can set up much like this. For P I R, it's much like a permit, you have P I R number, and put P I R number in, and you pay your payment.
She, she, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not gonna show on reports.
I'm just asking.
I already issued an internal number anyway.
Oh.
It would be.
So. So if we take a breath, this. We use somebody else's turn. We take a breath here, and say, okay, there's work that you can pre-do, before we pass this, it says, this is telling me, this is supposed to be the cost of your guys, I, you know, I have this, I have a support bill, and it costs this, perfect time, because that's the time. And she did a model, she possibly did a model for us, and just, like, later, but, then, do we have to adjust this at all? I don't know, we just go by the law itself, and there's nothing to do, just approve this, and let's just go.
Just go by law, we're having to, the law, and how we're trying to get law, figure out the policy law.
Like you said, there, we have to send a, that's, that's first.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve this. Whatever ordinance is called.
I sent. Twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Dash ten?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-five dash ten, I make a motion to approve that.
Yeah, we need to set starting.
It's, uh, there, is any time level?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there might be some value in, in, I hate to pick the can down the road, but because there are systems that have to be set into place, you know, being able to charge, a couple of outstanding questions. Put, put like, uh, beginning January first, or December first, something like that, just to, well, like, December first, I mean, that's Thanksgiving, like, that's a little close to, I forgot, we're already in November.
Cheyenne's trying to get pretty quick, she's, like, P I.
So I heard my name.
She said, what?
I said, I heard the first start. Talking about, how long would it take, like, we don't want this to go into effect tomorrow, and you're not ready to start receiving requests for this mechanism, so do you need December first, January first, December fifteen?
I wonder if Simonson may get assistance, though.
Uh.
Including the, like, which is the payments?
That's what, yeah.
A month?
A couple of days.
Something.
We already got a timeline, please, just set that up.
I'm emailing longer, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, can we, can we vote January first and see?
Yeah.
I don't know how long it's gonna take them to get an answer or figure it out.
Can we vote?
Obviously, December first, if it's not in place, we can have.
We, well, or, we, obviously, we, we, we won't. I mean, we could also table it, but if we want to put a January first timeline, and that gives us time, we get all the systems in place, so.
I would just go, say, December fifteenth is three weeks, you'll form a review, coming to your school next.
Okay.
I mean, I would hope that we would have an answer from both of you by then, and then, I think it's just gonna be a, I don't even have to think about it a little bit, it, it can't be that difficult.
Let it tweet. Right, and if we come into, uh, we didn't know, I could assume, I mean, we're not very involved, it's not start.
Correct.
Correct. This is all we start.
And then, there's, like I said, there's discretion, so it could be one of those things where, hey, we're not ready to start charging, but Cheyenne can start logging hours, starting December fifteenth.
So not, so I'd like to do December, and when they're ready, we can start charging. I may be not ready for December first, because you said, and I won't, and then, and we're not ready any laws, and when we're ready, as long as they charge, once they start charging.
Right.
For everybody, for our, to be fair, if, if we're not even such at the time, we have to post anything, put anything on the list, saying, hey, we're not charging yet, we're not ready.
So I would say, any requests that come in after December first, the letter from Cheyenne should start tracking the numbers, and say, we're not, we're not at this time, uh, charging for, uh, request under thirty-six hours. Cumulate request under thirty-six.
So you have enough.
If you see credit, you.
We can, we can, we can, we can start initiating, or, yeah, say, we estimate, you know, January first, we'll start, that's.
So I, I'm saying December first, when you have the time, make sure. State.
We may not have to start, I'm just, I'm trying to put people on, we're not gonna start it in this.
And they will just stay.
Yeah.
I don't think so, it's nonsense.
Yeah.
Not on the basis of.
So.
Okay, so your motion?
My, my, it's hard, Eric, it's, it's different.
Go ahead, yes, okay.
Okay.
What's your question?
My, I said, not a question, the state, so the way ordinance is working. Oh, go ahead. I'm just waiting. Secretary Gill. No, Secretary, uh, Bill. The passing ordinance, process of passing an ordinance is, we're creating basically a law. We're codifying what already wasn't. Now, when does an ordinance take place, the first things that happen is that it changes, we, we've signed, and the mayor's signed, if the mayor doesn't sign, it still goes without effect, after three days of her not signing. It goes without effect, correct?
Depending on the effective date of the ordinance, it's usually the ultimate, but my point is, in this case, if we're gonna defer to December first, notice section six, effective date, let's say, this is sort of, so it take effect on December first, twenty twenty-five. I don't see sections. Wait, oh, we're gonna say when that takes effect. That's what I'm saying, yeah, that's, that's what was just mentioned, is putting it in December first.
Well, the, it would be. It says the effective date on this very.
Right, because that's what, what you make a motion is to make it effective on December first, and then the ordinance will be up.
It did, I did, they just may not be ready. I, I just worry that.
Great.
Actual law, we're saying, we're, we want to codify that it's effect, we don't give it to us, I don't, I'm saying, I'm asking you.
You set the effective date.
Yes, so you gotta change the verdict on the ordinance before it's.
No, you have to make a motion to change the verdict, and then pass that motion, and then the paper work will get updated before it's signed by the mayor.
Okay.
That's.
What day do you want?
December first.
You remember, Kate?
I'll do it for some. No, I, I'm with you. I mean, it's all, it's time to, like, like you said, let people know.
Yeah.
For warrants, that effective date, I don't feel it's really enforcing January first, even if you're gonna start.
If they're ready, it's okay, maybe, I like, they're ready, however, if they're on the, she's sent out the email, you will start charging. Right? Whatever they're ready, I, I don't know when that hits, and it's the next year, probably, I'm sure it'll be December. Off, at least we're starting, that makes me happy, but I'm on, I'm one vote. Same.
So let's change the verdict right now.
I want to change the verdict.
Well, we gotta press the, the motion through the order that they have, so.
The what?
We have an open motion, eighty to accept.
Yeah, I think.
I'm, so, could you actually draw that? You can draw, that's nice.
Draw a minute.
It's not only that, it takes a minute.
If somebody else can do it, you can, you can.
Our city attorney is, I want to give advice, so.
Right, Andy, that is your second, yeah, I'm second in my.
So I amend it, session six, that's the date, we have December first.
Say that again, please.
The effective date will be changed, the orders will shot take effect December first, twenty twenty-five, October. Great.
Doesn't have to be separate.
Huh?
He's asking, does he have to do it separately, change the date, and then do this motion? I'm just amending the motion.
He's admitting his original motion, yeah, it's his motion, so the second, second's removed from that original motion. Just admitting the original motion to say, pass it, with the change, section six, the effective date, December first, twenty twenty-five.
Great.
It's gonna be.
Yeah, he will, he will need a second for that.
So we have a motion from Andy to approve the ex-station's requester ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash one zero, with the change, or amended in section six, to an effective date of December first, twenty twenty. Do we have a second?
Second.
So does it, does it need a second to approve?
No, because it's on the.
Make sure we got it done.
Yeah.
So.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All debated.
Yeah, wait, I'm sorry, can you read the actual content of the first paragraph? He's a, of course, he's a.
I think Phil read that already.
No.
Of the header. I think after, yeah, I can read it again. So it's the ordinance, the city of Simon's in Texas establishing a public information policy to manage excessive repetitive or similar requests for public information, and designate a public information coordinator pursuant to the Texas Public Information Act, providing for effective date, providing for.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I am the discussion and possible action to create a resolution. Sorry, I got on my phone, it's like written all over it. Amending the cost of peddler's permits from one hundred dollars to thirty dollars, and discuss the expiration timeframe of the permit. So over time, the peddler permit for the city of Simon's is updated some years ago to one hundred dollars for the first year, and a renewal fee of twenty dollars every year after that, for a maximum of five years. And there was some. It's unclear, it wasn't spelled out, so the timeframe would be clear, is that a calendar year, or is it a year from when you paid for the permit? So the clock is different for every person who, uh, registers for a peddler permit, or not. So the discussion is, we've had some requests last year to reduce that fee from a hundred dollars for the initial permit to thirty, because the idea was that it was too high, repetitive, and vendors don't register and sell, and so you stop. And then the renewal fee lasts at twenty dollars a year. So we need to clarify, are we willing to reduce our cost, make that official? And do we designate either a calendar year or a whole new, as a time period?
Who currently tracks all of that? Is it part of you? Do you track, like, when somebody came in, the day their first came in? And it should, it, it should, I don't have that much experience with it, however, I have seen there's a module in there that will show you, uh, everything that's expired. Like, and it tracks when it, so I think to me, it, I feel like it's fair to them to, to have it for me the same way, like, it's from the whole year, like, I got it eleven oh one. But it only tracks that, so that's not adding more work? No, yeah, it's our, it, it tracks when they expire. You just have to put the, how long?
Yeah, we found some permits that have a time period, six months, which happens to have a period of a year. Then if you participate, for example, in two events, let's say you did, uh, Alabama, the spring and the fall, but your permit expired because it's only six months apart. So, I mean, lots of confusion, we want to resolve.
What, what's our total breed?
I don't have.
It is not many of those, you got to come by, or what is that? It does, the general.
There, yeah, there was, uh. Oh, I thought you were actually, you can add that on that. What is it?
Kind of depends on the year and the events that you want.
So what is a peddler versus a vendor? So we have, I understand vendors, we have those things that happen.
A, a peddler is a permit for the city, so we know who's here, and who's vending in the city.
Okay.
The vendor permit is if they participate in an event that charges a fee, like a fundraiser or a ground up. If they want to charge a fee, help pay for their tent, or because they are a fundraising organization, which is not adopted, they want to charge a fee for that. If it was anybody other than a, a part of the city of Simon's, we wouldn't be gaining that money and worrying about those vendors. But because it belongs to the city, the time is beautiful, we also manage that through the city hall, so that's why we can both, and the permits handle the permits here.
So, that's that. First, what I'm saying is, if it comes knocking on my door, who's the solicitor, I'm, do you permit them?
It's a different kind of permit than we're talking about, but yes.
Is it a solicitor permit?
They have permit, this, this is all that's not.
The field, when I used to pop my fingers, I had rituals, or appear to have, I would pay the city, I had. Count two, two, I would say, pet, or somebody selling a cup, yeah, very valuable, yeah, that's a pet.
So a person said, no, pretend, I'm if it's not a vendor. They're both.
But the, but the vendor payment goes to K F B, or does it come to the city? We're accepting the, the vendor payment on behalf of them.
Got it, so we, now we're getting money for the vendor, coming to say, what do we do from the peddler, that's it?
The peddler comes to the city, the vendor goes to K F B.
Okay, so you got double win.
Correct, like, for example, if you are participating in the playing at Reyes, you say, yes, we don't charge a vendor fee for that, if it's not part of. It's how you have your, so if she wants to, and you have a peddler permit all day.
Got it.
And then you either pay reason or you don't, and she sets that up at the service.
I used to, I pop, pop, when it's a race, I would get a permit, so.
This is.
So that's all the part.
They were, so I agree, yeah.
So I, I will say that in the past couple of years, working with, on both sides, having a peddler's permit at a hundred dollars is a lot, and it has secured any laws of vendors for us, because it is a double-waisted pair, having to pay a hundred dollars to the city, and also a vendor fee, which ninety-nine percent of the time, all craft fairs have a vendor fee, uh, and it, that is too difficult for us. So I firmly believe that it's not the end of the world.
So the compensation of thirty dollars and pink post puts a discussion in mind, and you do that, you sign a review for that.
So, you guys are representing, I'm just making thirty dollars. I agree, don't have to pay it for another fee, I mean, I've got, pop a lot, awkward, make it just great.
He.
Yeah. You know what, it's been a price of mine, I can't tell you where that number, I don't remember where that number came from. Uh, there are a lot of Cs that don't have a Bs at all, so like, I, when I moved to Simon's, and that was very new to me, so, because I had done vendor events before, it's something that I had ever come across until I did here, so I wasn't familiar with it, so I'm not absolutely sure. I think that might have been something that they talked about prior to, before, because I don't, I can't speak confidently.
So honestly, the reason for revenue, that is more caused, it's more of a, it's.
Sure, I'd love to make a motion. Nope.
Sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, no, I love it. But, right now, the current ordinance states that the registration certificate is to not exceed a hundred and eighty days. So, and the registration certificate is to not exceed a hundred and eighty days, six months, and so it was mentioned wanting a year, which is great.
Yeah.
So I just, the, the motion should be to set the permit fee for peddlers at thirty dollars, and to amend the ordinance to make it one, uh, three hundred sixty-five days, uh, rolling thing. No, it's ordinance, because it's an ordinance.
So can you give us an ordinance? Correct.
What's that? No, ordinance number.
Yeah, it'll be ordinance, uh, two thousand, what year is this, twenty-five dash one one dash eleven?
Oh, wait, I thought you said there was an ordinance.
There was, and you, it is an ordinance, you need one.
So what's, what's that?
Oh, I, I don't know the specific ordinance, but it's section twenty-five of your, of your code.
So would you have to rescind that, but you and I.
No, you, the, you would go, lays on top, and that's.
Read the same.
What, what has to read the same?
The one she's gonna make on Sunday, uh, eleven, has to read the same as the one that's out, dated?
No, so, so ordinance is, don't have to completely rescind and replace, you could, literally, the ordinance will say to, will strike through one hundred and eighty days, and put three hundred sixty-five days on a rolling year.
All right, so when we look at eco three six, and look up the ordinance, and we look up there, twenty twenty-five left, we can see a reference to twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, outdated, exchanged, modified, I mean, that's how you do it?
Yes.
So that's why, when Andy was asking, what is the other number, we really should include the other numbers, apologies.
Oh, since, it's ordinance number nine two zero one zero seven zero one, adopted, uh, January seventh, nineteen ninety-two.
But I don't need to say those numbers, would you just, have you guys stop for one second? Yes.
Yes.
One more time?
Yes, so it is ordinance number nine two zero one zero seven zero one.
All right, you'll have to keep the P I D on that.
No, it's there. So I'm gonna say my motion slow, make sure I have everything in it, okay? So I like to make a motion, going, motion number two zero two five, that's one one, that the city of Simon's stands for the peddler permit from a hundred dollars to thirty dollars, and that thirty dollars will be a calling three hundred sixty-five day year from the moment that they get it, and then when the renewal is up after three hundred sixty-five days, it'll be a twenty dollar renewal fee.
Sure.
Angela? Andy? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We beat that double.
Any votes? That's you, then. All right, very good. Uh, we're glad, journey to executive session tonight, public information request is section ten, just for reference. Item eleven, this unfinished business, where we are getting a list of items that we lost combat, we're not scheduled yet, but that's a baseline, so we align for grant, and you listen there right now. And we'll add to that as we go. And having completed our agenda.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm, yeah. Unfinished business, that was on it, because it's what I had requested before, and I asked, saying, could there be something for that, like, would it not be on anything that anyone had talked about before, instead, we didn't bring it back?
It would be things like, somebody has asked for it to be on the agenda, and we're not ready yet, or we talked about it, and it wasn't complete, but it's not ready to be on this next agenda. It could be items that were tabled and need to come back for a vote, or be addressed, that sort of thing. Is that what you're asking?
Kind of, but it could include something new, like, if you have some new requests, now that we're putting on the agenda, or does it have to be done at some speed?
Well, can you just let me know, or do you have something you want to add now, or no, for next agenda, or all?
So we, we kind of, and so what I'd like to ask is that we put on the agenda, one way or another, could we name a court session on technical setup, inside network and technical setup, for all, to save your time. I appreciate that you're offering, so people at the private room, who did that little minor test, that they're coming out, is that, you're up, it's time you're up, setting the given eighteen, that's, that's the reason why I have to help, the mandates of it.
I'll take you on.
All right.
Yes, but I need you to, don't go too far down the road.
All right, I'm down.
But I got it.
All right.
Okay.
Sure.
I mean, I'm about to wrap up, right, but I just wanted to say something. I just want to give an update on the roads, this is what I've been working on, so I'm working with the other. They don't pop up, just get the pothole filled, uh, so I'm gonna represent, just to get some kind of pothole. There's three, three roads that I'm eyeballing, outside of the grant, uh, so I didn't move forward at speed government, but I'm hoping that a pothole kind of puts it back, uh, maybe a pothole.
Yeah, the county will pothole for us, so we could together, like, if you could start with this, maybe.
There's three main roads that need, everybody needs, and these give us several names to take care of. Getting started, because the, the other vendor is pushing that. I'm working on it, we're on the road, guys.
Andy could, Andy could, are we ever discussing on the pothole, stuff that's. Is that, those are roads that are not on the.
Right. Yeah, yeah, there's, there's three I really have eyeballing, uh, that, that they all kind of need, but, but would help minimize, and then you get on the secondary, not secondary, it is. I got it.
Thanks for doing this.
And the trees, they start.
This week.
This week, the trees, preparing to start this week.
Yeah, sections two and three are starting this week.
Thanks for making sure you did it, okay.
I appreciate you.
Out there, Simon's tonight.
All right, with that, we will adjourn at eight fifty-seven.